Good morning. This is the Tuesday, December 6th meeting of the Lancaster County Board of Commissioners. My name is Deb Shore, serving as Chair this year. To my left is our Vice Chair, Krista Yelkum. On the far end, Commissioner Rick Vest. And to my right, Commissioner Roma Amundsen. If you would please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Clerk, if you begin the agenda, please.
A copy of the Nebraska Open Meetings Act is located on the wall at the rear of the hearing room. Additionally, all written material to be discussed in today's open meeting is available for electronic viewing from the county clerk's staff. Printing options are available on request. The material can also be viewed on the county's website at lancaster.inny.gov. Gen item 1 are minutes. Approve the minutes of the Board of Commissioners meeting held on November 29th, 2022.
I move approval of the minutes. Second. Comments or corrections? Seeing none, call the roll, please.
Vest.
Yes.
Amundsen.
Yes.
Yelkum.
Yes.
Shore.
Yes.
Motion carries four to zero. Next are claims, approval of the claims processed through December 6th, 2022. This needs to be amended to include the payroll ending on November 30th, 2022.
I move approval of the claims through December 6th with the addition of the payroll through November 30th, 2022.
Second. Motion is second to approve the claims. Call the roll, please.
Vest.
Yes.
Amundsen.
Yes.
Yelkum.
Yes.
Shore.
Yes.
Motion carries four to zero. Next are claims, including billings for goods and services beyond the 90-day time period, provided in Nebraska's revised statute 23-135. This includes City of Lincoln Solid Waste Operations dated November 28th, 2022, for a total of $107.84, and lending cutting dated November 30th, 2022, for a total of $94.
I move approval.
Second. Motion is second to approve the second set of claims under item B. Call the roll, please.
Yelkum.
Yes.
Vest.
Yes.
Amundsen.
Yes.
Shore.
Yes.
Motion carries four to zero. Number three, consent items. These routine business items are expected to be adopted without dissent. Any individual item may be removed for special discussion and consideration by a Commissioner or by any member of the public without prior notice. Unless there is an exception, these items will be approved as one with a single vote of the Board of Commissioners. These items are approval of amendments to following county contracts. C-22-864 with BI Incorporated for offender monitoring solutions. C-20-132 with Hallworth Inc. for a price increase on furniture, insulation, and related products and services. C-20-759 with Executive Janitorial Corp. for cleaning services at the county engineering office, shop, and weed control office. C-18-288 with Encompass for office seating. C-21-57 with Sarpy County to provide microfilming and scanning services. Right-of-way contracts with Parrot Family Farms LLC, North 84th Street, and Bluff Road in the amount of $748. Utility permit number 2299 allowing Winston &amp; Nebraska LLC to relocate existing buried facilities for replacement of M-151 at no cost to the county. Utility permit number 2307 allowing Winston &amp; Nebraska LLC to relocate existing buried facilities for A-177 and A-178 at no cost to the county. Change order number two to county contract C-22-729 with Pavers Inc. for patching overrun. Change order number two to contract C-22-472 with Dynamic Dirt Works and Demolition for Flobo Phil overrun. Received and placed on file on November 22, monthly reports for the following. Clerk of the District Court, Assessor Registered Deeds, Records and Information Management, and County Clerk.
Move approval of the consent items. Second. Motion is second to approve the consent items. Call the roll, please.
Amundsen.
Yes.
Yelkum.
Yes.
Vest.
Yes.
Shore.
Yes.
Motion carries four to zero. Number four is a special presentation as the Commissioners Award of Excellence for October 2022 to Marilyn Olson, Election Commissioner in the category of Customer Relations.
Mr. Shively. And I believe we have a nomination to read into the record. Mr. Clerk?
Marilyn Olson has been selected as the Commissioners Award of Excellence winner for October 2022. She has worked for the Lancaster County Election Commissioner's Office for 25 years and was nominated by Becky Gaston Wise in the category of Customer Relations. In her nomination, Gaston Wise states, Marilyn has served the voters of Lancaster County for 25 years. Marilyn assists voters in her office on the phone and by email. She is always kind and knowledgeable. If anyone has a question that is out of the norm, Marilyn is the staff person to go to for help. She has trained countless temporary staff over the years to ensure the voters of Lancaster County have a safe, accurate, and efficient voting process. Marilyn recently received a thank you note from a voter who resides in a senior living facility. You see, Marilyn has made sure that residents of senior living facilities and nursing homes are able to request and cast an early voting ballot if they choose. This particular voter was grateful for the many years Marilyn has helped her be able to cast her ballot, and so are we. Marilyn also helps voters who need or want to use the express vote machine in her office, thus allowing all voters to cast their ballots privately and independently. Probably most impressively, Marilyn helped voters cast their ballots through the worst of the COVID pandemic despite the uncertainty about how that might affect her own health. In November 2020, she was here before and after business hours as well as on weekends assisting voters who were sometimes lined up out the door and across the parking lot. Marilyn retired in 2023, and we will all miss her. For these reasons, we're pleased to award Olson with the Commissioners Award of Excellence for the month of October 2022.
Well, Marilyn is the only staff member remaining in the office that has served longer than I have in our office. So she was there when I started. So we do appreciate Marilyn. Marilyn is always very kind on the phone with voters, voters in person. Customer service has been very important to her, and we will miss her in Lancaster County and as part of our -- she's been part of our team, like I said, since she started as a temporary employee in 1996 and then was hired full-time in 1997. And so she, like me, and a couple others in our office, will be leaving. So we do appreciate all the years that Marilyn has done for our office. Thank you.
Marilyn, I wanted to give you this plaque in behalf of the Commission. Thank you for all of your work. I've long felt and been proud about our election commission here, and a lot of that is the customer service piece, finding the answers, helping people make sure that they can vote. And I really appreciate the efforts. I'm sure I've been one of those people that's called with a --
You have been. I know. Ask everyone up there.
Everyone. Thank you very much for your service and a well-deserved retirement.
Thank you very much. Thank you. I just want to say that I could not have done it without all of my coworkers, the permanent staff, the temporary staff, because we all work together, and they all deserve this, too.
You were very kind to share that with your coworkers. I'm touched by the work that you do to make sure that those voters with special needs have access to voting and, more importantly, the senior citizens. I mean, we're all a growing population in that area, and so the outreach to make sure that it's convenient for them to vote. And it can't go, you know, without mentioning, the award said you have trained numerous, you know, part-time staff. I'm sure that's in the hundreds. I mean, if not 1,000, when you think 25 years and how many people come in and out each election cycle, and the knowledge that you have shared with them is important. Like Krista said, your retirement is well deserved. So congratulations.
Enjoyed. Thank you.
Next is new business. Five A is appointments to the Lancaster County Extension Board for a three-year term beginning in January 2023 through December of 2025. This includes Jim Ballard, Teresa Erdkamp, Zainab Rita, and Megan Sittler.
Good morning, Karen.
Good morning. Good to see all of you, as always. I have with me a couple of the members. Unfortunately, two of them were not able to attend this morning, being out of town and some other job responsibilities. But we have the newest members that are beginning now in January of '23 with their first term on the Extension Board, and it's Teresa Erdkamp and Zainab Rita. So you pronounced all that very well, sir. So anyway, Jim and Megan will begin their second terms on the board. So I just wanted to -- I can let them speak a little bit, but just wanted to come here and request your approval for them to be on our Extension Board. We're very excited. They both come from an education kind of field, which obviously, extension is all about anyway. So I think they're a really good fit for our board. So Teresa, do you want to say anything?
I'm Teresa Erdkamp, and I'm looking forward to helping our youth grow and help our community in several different aspects.
You come from an education background?
I work at the School District 145. I'm the district registrar, and I take care of all of our power school technology needs and student help technology as well.
Very good. Glad to have you.
Thank you.
Good morning, Board members. Zainab Rita, Equity Officer and Administrator for the Office of Coordinated Student Support Services at the Nebraska Department of Education. It's a long title. I look forward to promote equity and inclusion and be advocate for addressing the need of the whole child, for all students, specifically for served students, students with disability, a student with poverty, and with English as a second language. So I look forward to serve in that capacity.
Yeah. We appreciate your willingness to step forward in this unpaid position, serving Lancaster County. We're glad to have you. Is there a motion? I would move approval of these members.
Yeah, I would second that.
Okay. Motion is second. Call the roll, please.
Vest.
Yes.
Amundsen.
Yes.
Yelkum.
Yes.
Shore.
Yes.
Motion carries four to zero.
Thank you very much. You may see them again sometime with me down here.
Thank that.
B is a resolution to matter approval of official bonds of County Veterans Service Office staff.
Move approval. Second. Second, I believe this is a requirement in state statute that they have these bonds.
Yes, indeed it is.
Call the roll.
Vest.
Yes.
Amundsen.
Yes.
Yelkum.
Yes.
Shore.
Yes.
Motion carries four to zero. C is resolution accepting maintenance responsibilities for certain roads and streets located within Coyote Ridge addition.
Good morning. John Barry, Lancaster County Engineering. This is a request by Coyote Ridge, the owners to -- for the county to take over maintenance. This is an addition that's just south of Agnew and just off of Northwest 70th Street. It contains about a little over 2,000 feet of gravel roadway, and they have met all of our conditions to take over maintenance.
Pam Dingman, Lancaster County Engineer. So this is my moment for my standard statement in which I say, once again, per the requirements, we are taking over maintenance of a subdivision with no funding source to maintain this subdivision long-term, and this continues to be a drain on my capital improvement program as well as our overall maintenance for the county.
Move approval of the resolution. Second. Call the roll, please.
Yelkum.
Yes.
Vest.
Yes.
Amundsen.
Yes.
Shore.
Yes.
Motion carries four to zero. Five D is resolution adopting and approving the execution of a master agreement with the Nebraska Department of Transportation.
John Barry, Lancaster County Engineering. One of the main jobs of the county surveyor is to maintain the original government markers. These markers were set every half-mile, every mile. Generally, when the Department of Roads comes in, Department of Transportation, excuse me, comes in and does a project, they notify the counties, not just myself, but other counties where they're doing the work. At that time, I send our survey crews go out. When we find these corners, we make sure they're in good shape. We monument them if we need to. We tie them out. At the end of the project, we then go back out and reset them if we need to. In the past, probably since the mid-1980s, the Department of Transportation has allowed $100 each to do these corners. On our recent project that we just completed, Highway 33 between Crete and Roca, we spent around $250 a corner to do that. So this agreement is for $300 a corner now. So it's much more in line with the current costs that we spend to do this work.
Move approval.
Second. E?
This is D. This is D.
Were you referencing -- I think you were referencing E and where on D. Is that right? Did I -- okay, okay. Is there any comment on D before we read that? Okay. Want to read item D, Mr. Clerk?
I already did. Resolution adopting and approving execution of master agreement with the Nebraska Department of Transportation.
Well, let's go back then.
Let's go back to five D.
We just did -- read D into the record, the presentation.
I've got a motion from Vest and a second from Amundsen.
Okay, so let's go ahead and vote on D, and I think we'll be good. Call the roll, please.
Amundsen.
Yes.
Yelkum.
Yes.
Vest.
Yes.
Shore.
Yes.
Motion carries four to zero. Is agreement with Nebraska Department of Transportation for the perpetuation of corners of land surveys after Nebraska Department of Transportation highway projects.
John Ward with the County Attorney's Office. John Barry summarized this contract with you, and previously, we addressed just the resolution authorizing the acceptance and signature of the contract. I would just note that recital P in this contract makes a reference to Exhibit B, which is incorrect. It should be Exhibit A. I'm just going to interlineate Exhibit A for B after signing.
Okay. I would move approval of this contract, though, with that correction. Second. Call the roll, please.
Vest.
Yes.
Amundsen.
Yes.
Yelkum.
Yes.
Shore.
Yes.
Motion carries four to zero.
Thank you for your work on that. We won't be losing money now.
F is a temporary construction easement and maintenance agreement with the Nimahaw National Resource District to allow the county to enter properties located approximately 1,381 feet east of the intersection of South 148th Street and Princeton Road for the purpose of removing a box culvert and installing two underground under-road drainage culverts and maintaining the new drainage culverts.
Alex Olson, Right-of-Way Manager, Lancaster County Engineering. This is kind of a unique one. Last week, I believe, you guys signed the contract with the actual landowner. The Nimahaw District had a blanket easement over top of that, and this agreement that we're getting with them is to let us be on their easement and to construct it, and it is for the life of the culvert. So you guys have any questions?
Approval.
Thank you.
Second. Call the roll, please.
Vest.
Yes.
Amundsen.
Yes.
Yelkum.
Yes.
Shore.
Yes.
Motion carries four to zero. G is an agreement with Matthew Taylor to provide non-exempt Lancaster County engineering employees in the right-of-way agent classification compensatory time off in lieu of the compensation of hours worked in excess of 40 hours per week. The county will pay the employee at the rate of one and one-half hours for each overtime hour which the employee works, up to maximum accrual of 40 hours of compensatory time.
Pam Dingman, Lancaster County Engineer. You know, it's not until you say the word "compensatory" that you realize why we say "comp time." So -- but of course, we're in a formal setting, so we don't use those sort of abbreviations. This is a compensatory time agreement. There was a previous agreement when another employee was in this position. As the Commissioners are aware, we have an extraordinary amount of right-of-way to buy in the next year, and Mr. Taylor would like to have a similar agreement, except for we made it directly with the employee, the agreement, not with the position. And so this is to make that correct and have an agreement with Mr. Taylor that he can have up to 40 hours of compensatory time off for the additional time he puts in to acquire right-of-way for Lancaster County.
Move approval.
Yeah.
Second. It was noted during our briefing that this particular position requires duties outside the normal 8:00 to 5:00 work time.
We're meeting with the public, and, you know, we are asking them to sell us their land, and so we are meeting with them on their terms.
Yes.
Which can be humbling.
Okay. Call the roll, please.
Yelkum.
Yes.
Vest.
Yes.
Amundsen.
Yes.
Shore.
Yes.
Motion carries four to zero. H is a deed restriction agreement with Chris and Tracy Bruster for property located at 4822 South 148th Street, Lancaster County, Nebraska.
Good morning, John Ward with the Lancaster County Attorney's Office. This was a application for an accessory dwelling unit. With our plan and commission under Article 13 of the zoning resolution, these property owners are required to file a deed restriction saying that they won't sell the accessory dwelling unit separate from the property.
I move approval. Second. Call the roll, please.
Amundsen.
Yes.
Yelkum.
Yes.
Vest.
Yes.
Shore.
Yes.
Motion carries four to zero. Five I is an agreement with Clark and Ederson for architectural design services associated with the plan to remodel a portion of the city garage located at 635 J Street for the purpose of operating a civil protective custody center. The cost we've paid using county ARPA funds in an amount not to exceed $97,940.
Good morning, Commissioners. Karen Peterson, Facilities and Property Director. This agreement, or the selection of Clark and Ederson, came out of an RFP, going through the RFP process, and part of it was to come up with the scope and then negotiate the fee. And so we put those two pieces together, and so I'm asking for approval today. This agreement, what I do really like about this agreement is we have a very specific scope of services in here, and we have a very specific deadline that we've already lined out. We need to be careful as we're working with ARPA funds now. 2026 sounds like a long ways off, and it simply is not. So I'm asking for approval unless there's any questions. Glad to keep this project moving forward. I would move approval. Second. Call the roll, please.
Vest.
Yes.
Amundsen.
Yes.
Yelkum.
Yes.
Shore.
Yes.
Motion carries four to zero.
Thank you, Karen.
Four to zero. J is an agreement with Nebraska Department of Motor Vehicles for Lancaster County to reimburse the Department of Motor Vehicles cash fund for costs associated with electronic clean issuing 24/7 sobriety program permits. The cost of county shall not exceed $99,704.
I move approval.
Second. Motion is second to approve. Call the roll, please.
Vest.
Yes.
Amundsen.
Yes.
Yelkum.
Yes.
Shore.
Yes.
Motion carries four to zero. K is a grant contract with St. Monica's Home using ARPA funds in the amount of $350,000.
It should be $750,000. So that was a typo on my part, so I just wanted to come and set the record straight that that should be 750, and the contract is for that amount.
Okay. I would move approval. Second. For funds to be utilized for additional beds on the Veterans Victory Park campus for women with substance abuse needs. Call the roll, please.
Yelkum.
Yes.
Vest.
Yes.
Amundsen.
Yes.
Shore.
Yes.
Motion carries four to zero. L is a contract with Morbick Fire and Safe to provide annual service of backflow preventers. The cost of county does not exceed $700.
I move approval.
Second. Exactly. Sure, the backflow preventer is, but we must need them, so call the roll.
Amundsen.
Yes.
Yelkum.
Yes.
Vest.
Yes.
Shore.
Yes.
Motion carries four to zero. M is approval of Keno Human Services Prevention Fund 2023 recommendations.
Move approval.
Tremendous amount of work by a lot of people who are knowledgeable about our community and the needs that are going on. You know, I live in a world where I'm not necessarily aware of the challenges different members of our communities facing. So thanks to everyone who worked so hard to sort out all the requests, limited funding as always, lots of requests, and it was a challenge. But I think this is a really good list, and I would second the recommendations.
You served on that committee, and the recommendations of that committee went to the Joint Budget Committee, so the city and county and other elected officials had the opportunity to review that, and now it's here for final approval. So call the roll.
Vest.
Yes.
Amundsen.
Yes.
Yelkum.
Yes.
Shore.
Yes.
Motion carries four to zero. N is a recommendation for the Southeast Nebraska Development District to award a contract through the Lancaster County Owner Occupied Rehabilitation Housing Program for project number 014 to Wilkie Plumbing in the amount of $2,000 to remove and place a water heater unit in a home to provide hot water.
Good morning.
Good morning, everyone. Sorry again for another kind of expedited request, but this is actually the same project I was here for previously. I tried to have someone take a look at the hot water heater at the same time we did the HVAC system. No one was able to really look at it. She was able to get in contact with someone that she knew that replaced an element. It was working for a while, and then last week it went kaput. And so I reached out to a plumber of ours that was able to give us some numbers on this. He is based on UTN. That's why it is a little bit higher for his mileage and everything. But we do have just a $200 contingency in case if it goes a little over the $1,800. He anticipates getting the job done. This still is lower than the money we saved from the HVAC unit. So this is a little bit higher, but overall, we're still under the projected budget of what we had for this project. So it's all going pretty smoothly, and I do want to say thanks to Commissioner Vest and Kristi Bauer for their help getting this on the docket for today. Without them, it wouldn't have happened, so I do appreciate that, and I know the homeowner will as well.
Well, my part was fairly small. I just alerted the smart people, and they served over. So really appreciate your response to this individual. Being without hot water is not something any of us find attractive, so great response by your team and our folks as well. I would move approval.
Second. Motion is second to approve. Call the roll, please.
Vest.
Yes.
Amundsen.
Yes.
Yelkum.
Yes.
Shore.
Yes.
Motion carries four to zero.
Thank you.
Thank you, folks.
O, recommendations from Personnel Policy Board to do the following. Revise and change the pay grade for the Grant Coordinator and amend the Family and Medical and change the pay grade for the grant coordinator and amend the Family and Medical Leave Act Human Resources policy bulletin.
Are we doing these? Go ahead, man.
Hi, I'm Angela Scriven. I'm the Employee Engagement Division Leader in County Human Resources. This is an expanded role for the grant coordinator, so we looked at the expanded scope and did a market research study, and that revealed that a higher market rate or pay range is required for that.
Yeah, and the work that's done by grant coordinators often more than pays for the cost of their salary, and we're very fortunate to have a highly competent person in this position, so I'm glad to move approval of Item 01.
I second your comments, and I second the motion.
I call the roll on Item 01.
Yocum?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Motion carries four to zero.
For two.
Angela, do you have any comments about the amendments to the policy bulletin?
So the, just to really high level, what we're updating is we are changing how we're calculating the amount of, how the hours refresh for each employee for FMLA. We're going to a rolling 12-month period. It refreshes every 12 months, and that is the most common of the four ways that the Family Medical Leave Act allows, and so we're transitioning to that. We also created within our HR team a leave coordinator, and so currently, some of the work for FMLA is done in the department and HR. We're moving all of that to HR with communication and collaboration with the department.
Be good for consistency and compliance. I move approval.
Second.
All right, motion second to approve, O2. Call the roll, please.
Vest?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Motion carries four to zero. Next is number six, public comment. Those wishing to speak on items relating to county business, none agenda, we do so at this time.
Is there anyone wishing to make public comment? Good morning. I'll remind anyone interested in making public comment that you're limited to five minutes, and I do ask that you sign in on the registry and state your name.
Hi, there, and good morning. My name is Penny Stevens, and I appreciate this opportunity to share the information that I have gained through my own research. I'm a proud American. My parents raised me to stand up for my country and the American flag. They taught me right from wrong and to tell the truth. What is going on here in our country today with our elections is a travesty. Our elections have gotten worse since the introduction of the voting machines in the state of Florida back in 2000. Are you aware that back in October of 2016, Gallup took a poll of registered voters, and only 24% of those polled were very confident in the election process? Only 38 were somewhat confident and 38% not confident. Did you know a poll taken by NPR in September of 2018 had 48% of the Democrats stating they had little or no trust in our elections? The Guardian posted the results of the Axios Momentive Poll from January of this year, where 40% of our Americans believe that the 2020 election was not handled correctly. Forty percent. A week later, the New York Post shared a poll from the show Cooperman Research, and 23% were unsure if their vote was counted. Fifty-one percent believe that our U.S. republic is at risk of extinction. Both Democrats and Republicans evenly agree that our republic is in danger. These polls do show Americans are not confident in their elections. We are constantly being told there is no evidence to widespread election fraud, and that's because the people are not allowed to present the evidence. The judges across our country just refuse to hear the people. This is a huge problem. Are you aware of this petition that I gave you is currently at the Supreme Court? It is, this petition is not about the outcome of the election. This is about the breach of national security. If you were a police officer and someone came in and said they have witnessed a crime, let's say two witnesses, and they have evidence, it's your job as an officer of the law to investigate. If you do not investigate, you become an accessory to the crime. Back on December 17th, the National, the Director of the National Intelligence confirmed there had been significant foreign interference from China and Iran and possibly other nations. Here's one of the highest-held positions in the world, and he was ignored. On January 6th, 2021, during the congressional hearing to certify the presidential election, 100 representatives requested a 10-day pause to investigate because they had evidence that there were issues during the election. And I repeat, our legislators had piles of evidence proving there was election fraud. 388 elected officials refused to pause for 10-day investigation to hear the evidence. Right there is the national breach of security. So now, in the hands of our top judicial system, is the petition 22380. And as you read through it, you will not be able to argue the legal grievance stated in the document as it is constitutional and will be taken into conference by the Supremes on January 6th, 2023, two years to the day that the crime was committed. I am sure you can figure out that should the Supreme Court rule in favor of this case, it will set a precedence for all moving forward. This action of removing over 388 elected officials from office will and indeed trickle down to our local governments. Once you read through this petition, you will know it is constitutional, and then ask yourself, are you for the Constitution or against it? You have a duty and an obligation to deliver the truth under the oath you took on becoming a commissioner for our Lancaster County. Do you want the people to represent, to trust you? Isn't it time for you to do the right thing and call for an investigation to our elections? Whether Democrat, Republican, or Independent, all the American people want are honest elections, an honest form of republic. Ponder this, if you will, as this moment in time will go down in world history. How will you answer when your children, your grandchildren, your nieces and your nephews ask about the election integrity back in 20 and 22? How will you answer when they ask, what side were you on? Did you help investigate? Did you provide transparency to the information showing the elections were legit? Is it because of you that today we can trust our elections once again? Choose today to be on the right side of history. I thank you so much, and may God bless our great nation.
Thank you very much, Ms. Stevens. Or if you would want to sign in, please, and introduce yourself for the record, and we will begin your five minutes.
My address is 1200 North 100th Street, and what I want to do is show this short video of what has gone on in Nebraska and as far as election integrity. And we're looking forward to the integrity of Lancaster County and you to help us bring this forward, because we are in danger.
John, can you turn it just a little bit? That's perfect. It's running. Thank you very much, Brad. I believe he had the opportunity to get through all the slides that you provided us with, so thank you very much for the information.
Thanks for listening. Thanks for caring.
Is there anyone else wishing to make public comment? Good morning. Yep, if you'd like to sign in, you can speak at either mic.
Hello, and thank you for allowing me to speak. My name is Dr. Susan Kess. I actually graduated from the University of Nebraska Medical Center in Omaha, and I received my undergraduate degree in mathematics and statistics in medicine here at UNL. And then I went on to work, get my residency in occupational environmental medicine and a master's in epidemiology, which is the mathematics applied to medicine. I then went on to work at the Center for Disease Control to investigate and create surveys and investigations around the country for environmental outbreaks. So I didn't do biological outbreaks. I did environmental outbreaks, disasters, train derailments, other kinds of spills. I did that for 15 years, developed surveys, went to many people's homes, looked at their health issues, their health questions, et cetera. I then worked for the Department of Homeland Security in teaching people in communities how to prepare for disasters from environmental contamination, weapons of mass destruction, biological, chemical, nuclear, biological. And so throughout my career, my emphasis really in training has been in mathematics and the application of mathematics to public health issues. And so I moved back to Nebraska just recently, and I intended a seminar or a presentation by a Dr. Douglas Frank. I don't know if you guys have heard of him, but he went through a very extensive, and some of the work that was done here, he went through a very extensive evaluation of the election process in 2020 across the country, including every single county in Nebraska, and he showed without a doubt scientifically that we had also election fraud in Nebraska. And being a scientist, I said, well, okay, you can just look at the numbers, but is that really true? Is that what really happened? And so I wanted to ask him about his algorithm and how he identified whether there was actually error or not. And so I investigated his work. I also investigated Larry Artega's work, which was this individual, and another person, Draza Smith, and they were scientists that have looked specifically at Nebraska. And there are others that have looked across the country. Well, how was it that, is that possible that we had election fraud in Nebraska? Did that really happen? Is that possible that I would come back to my state and find that state in disrepair? And so I got involved with some of these individuals here, and we went around door to door to talk to people, which is my expertise in developing surveys and asking questions. And so I know how to ask questions without imposing my opinions and getting information that I want to receive as opposed to, because I really wanted to know what was really going on here. And so unfortunately, we did talk, and you get a feeling of what people's inputs are. Almost everyone we went to, to their door, they talked to us. People that worked, people that were staying at home with their family. And so most of the people we talked to were concerned about the elections. That surprised me. We had a few people that shut their door in our faces, and that's their right. But these are some of the things that I found out personally. We had people that reported they had mailed ballots who did not request any. People were mailed multiple ballots with their name on it that were not requested. They were mailed ballots from others with other people's names on it that they obviously did not request. They also had on their register, we went by the register at their home and asked them, according to the voter registration rolls, who are these people? And many, many times, we saw people's names that were on there for two and five and 10 years later that had not ever been removed from their address. And anyway, some of them told us that they went to voting and were told that they had already voted, and there were other anomalies such as that. I became very concerned about our voting. I believe that I've done my homework. I believe that I've investigated many of these people, and I found that we have serious issues in Nebraska, and I recommend that we all vote to investigate the machines. That's one of the problems. We also had ballot harvesting. We also had voter rolls that were absolutely in error. And I came in and I registered to vote this last year without a driver's license, without any information about my address, nothing. They just took my word for it and registered me to vote, and yes, I did vote. And so we have lots of issues, and I believe that the election was stolen. I don't know which particular issues or persons, but our elections are definitely in jeopardy. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Kess. Your background is impressive. Is there anyone else wishing to make public comment?
Can I add something real quick? Those 388 respondents on that petition, 22380, waived their right to speak at the Supreme Court, so the Supreme Court will, on January 6th, just decide. Okay? Thank you. All right.
Mr. Clerk, if you'd continue with the announcements, please.
The Lancaster County Board of Commissioners will hold a staff meeting on Thursday, December 8th, 2022, at 8:30 a.m. in room 113 of the County City Building. The following meetings will be held on Tuesday, December 13th, 2022, in room 112 of the County City Building. The Lancaster County Board of Commissioners will hold its next regular meeting at 9 a.m. The Lancaster County Board of Commissioners will hold a staff meeting immediately following the Board of Commissioners' regular meeting. The Lancaster County Board of Commissioners will not hold a staff meeting on Thursday, December 15th, 2022, due to attend the Nebraska Association of County Officials' Annual Conference in Kearney, Nebraska. County Commissioners, severe reach dot 402-441-7447, or commission@lancaster.inny.gov. The Lancaster County Board of Commissioners' meeting is broadcast live on Link TV. Link TV is available on Allo Channel 2 and Spectrum Channel 1300. For the rebroadcast schedule, visit lincoln.inny.gov. Meetings are also streamed live on YouTube and Facebook. Link TV apps are also available on Roku, Apple TV, and Amazon Fire TV.
Move we adjourn.
Second.
Motion is second to adjourn. Call the roll, please.
Amundson?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yocum?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Motion carries four to zero.
All right. We are adjourned, and we'll next call to order the Lancaster County Board of Equalization meeting for Tuesday, December 6th. Mr. Clerk.
The Compendium of Nebraska Open Meetings Act is located on the wall at the rear of the hearing room. Initially, all written material to discuss today's open meeting is available for electronic viewing from the county clerk's staff. Printing options are available upon request. The material can also be viewed on the county's website at lancaster.inny.gov. Agenda or one or minutes, approve the minutes of the Board of Equalization meeting held on Tuesday, November 15th, 2022.
Move approval. Second. Motion second to approve the minutes. Call the roll, please.
Vest?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Motion carries four to zero. Number two, additions and deductions to the tax assessment rolls.
I move approval of the additions and deductions to the tax assessment rolls.
Second.
Motion second to approve. Call the roll.
Vest?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Motion carries four to zero. Next is number three, public hearings. The first public hearing is 451 exemption applications for the 2022 year.
All right. We will open the public hearing, starting with the 405 exemption applications.
Do some of your firm affirm with the testimony, is the truth or nothing but the truth?
I do. Scott Gaines, Deputy County Assessor, Registered Deeds. These exemption applications are recommending approval of a portion. This is based on an ownership change for a seminary out by Denton, simply has a new owner. We're recommending approval of the, everything but the agricultural acres, just like we had with the previous ownership.
Do we want to go ahead and?
Should we continue on with the next public hearing?
Let's continue on, and then we'll take action under item four.
Okay. Next is notice of proposed change in exemption status as for Nebraska Threvada Buddhist and Priestly Fraternity of St. Peter, Inc.
These are basically change of ownership that causes the exemptions to be removed. The one we just spoke of is one of the properties, actually it's two parcels, but that will continue that exemption. The other one was sold to a private entity, so that one will remain taxable. But this is the action to remove the pre-existing exemptions.
Is there anyone else wishing to provide testimony on these two items? All right. Item C.
Next is appeal on rejection of homestead exemption for Kamara S. Elam.
This is a homestead exemption that was received in our office in October by state statute. Homestead exemptions are required to be filed February 2 through June 30. The statute only allows an extension to July 20th under certain circumstances. So state of Nebraska runs the homestead exemption program, pays taxes for these individuals. They get to set the rules. The rules are cut and dry. We have no ability to approve an exemption received in October.
Is there anyone else wishing to make public comment?
Can I come in?
Yes, yes.
Hello, Scott. Good to see you.
How are you?
I'm fine. I'm here on your issue, actually, and I'm Jan Mum.
Want to go ahead and sign in on the registered?
Please.
Jan Mum, okay.
And good morning. I am going to request that some consideration be given for this late filed homestead exemption. It puts a financial burden on the individual who isn't going to receive the exemption. And I have to say that our firm prepared the homestead exemption form timely, sent it to the client for their submission to the county, and somehow it's not been received by the county. I have a copy of the document that we prepared showing that it was submitted or prepared timely with a follow-up with the tax return, which page two of the homestead exemption reflects the income from the individual who is in somewhat financial dire straits. And we submitted it with the October filing. For whatever reason, it didn't get to the county by the extended due date, which was October 17th. It arrived there shortly after. We have a notice from the county that they received it the first part of November. So we're talking days, but for this individual to not get the homestead exemption is going to create a financial crisis for her. And so I'm asking that some consideration, some latitude be given for the few days that it was received late. In my part, we had the perfect storm at my office. This year, I combined with two other practices, and so it meant an influx of clients. This happens to be one of those new clients to the firm where we were trying to get the information out, and in the midst of all of that, we had COVID. And if you know this, in a small firm, when you have a COVID crisis, it shuts down the practice and keeps us from preventing, from doing our job in a more timely and efficient manner. So I'm just asking that we have a little bit of compassion here for this person. The few days late doesn't change the fact that the return was received and filed, and I understand that there are some requirements by the county that they have to follow. I appreciate your consideration. Thank you very much.
For clarification, it's not the county regulations we're following, it's the state statute.
And it's June 30th, and we didn't receive until October. And if I may continue, we actually did send in the page one of the homestead exemption form dated June 27th, which was cut and thin to win, but it, through no fault of hers, it should have been received by the county. I don't, I'm not sure why it's not there, but I have evidence to support that we did file it. I don't know if that's something I can present to you or to you. I'm not sure which is the more appropriate.
But just for clarification, you sent it to her on that date, but it was her obligation to sign it and send it in?
That's correct.
And that step did not happen?
That's correct, yeah.
Okay. I think that's the step that's missing.
Yeah, yeah. I'm sorry.
The challenge here is that the state, this is 100% a state program that we administer through the county assessor's office and the board of commissioners. They set all the rules, and we've never seen them waiver or offer opportunities to waiver on those rules, so the funding's just not available once those deadlines are passed. And so we really can't offer you any consolation on this. Much as we appreciate your client situation, we understand it's very difficult.
We see three or four of these a year, and it's always a hard, it's a hard way to vote no.
Now, we're very sympathetic to, to her cause, but our hands are tied.
Thank you for that, and thank you for allowing me to present this today. Thank you.
Okay. We'll move on to the.
Next is motor vehicle tax exemption applications. This is for Sheridan Lutheran Church, St. Mark's United Methodist Church, Cedars Youth Services, Outlink, Inc., doing business as OutNebraska, Great Plains Community Church, Mosaic Christian Heritage Children's Home, Grace Evangelical Lutheran Church, Our Lady of Guadalupe Seminary, Inc., Catholic Social Services, and Food Bank of Lincoln.
Is there anyone wishing to provide public testimony on motor vehicle tax exemptions? If not, we'll close the public hearing and move to action item 4A.
4A is 2022 451 tax exemption applications.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion second to approve. Call the roll.
Yocum?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Motion carries four to zero. Next is notice, notices of proposed change in exemption status.
I move we approve the proposed changes from the assessor's office.
Second.
Call the roll, please.
Amundson?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Motion carries four to zero. C is appeal on rejection of homestead exemption.
I move that we approve the rejection of the homestead exemption based on state statutes.
Second.
Okay. Call the roll, please.
Vest?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Motion carries four to zero. D is motor vehicle tax exemption applications.
Move approval. Second.
Motion is second. Call the roll, please.
Vest?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Motion carries four to zero. Next is number five, public comment. Those wishing to speak to items relating to county board of equalization business, none on agenda, but may do so at this time.
All right. Seeing no one interested in public comment, is there a motion to adjourn?
That we adjourn. Second.
Call the roll, please.
Yocum?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Motion carries four to zero.
We are adjourned.